Replacement in the police department.
Motion, move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen one forty-three authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution township Lacy County, Washington, Jersey authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen one forty-four authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution township Lacy County, Washington, Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of nine million twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, monthly reports.
Municipal clerk's office for the month of April collected receipts in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. For the month of March, community development collected receipts in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Municipal court for the month of April collected receipts in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seventeen cents. Recycling for the month of April collected receipts in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Road opening permits in the amount of six hundred, six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Truck parking in the amount of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Me, I gotta abstain on those two.
Motion to approve Rappa license applications for the Lacy Soccer Club?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Add-ons?
No, I have no add-ons.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Ciaratello?
Yes, and I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I just want to recognize some of the efforts, especially Mr. Faulkner and some of the folks over at the high school. They did steal a little bit of my fire tonight, but I'm familiar with the Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs program. This program that's evidence-based, used around the state. Again, you've heard me say up here, some of the logic models talk about, in particular in New Jersey, some of the dabbling into alcohol and drugs start as early as age eleven, most unfortunately. So, as you had brought up, Mr. Faulkner, it doesn't always have to be with athletics. It could be with another type of activity. So, I applaud you. I look forward to taking my own daughter to that and certainly to use this pulpit as a stage to make the announcement to town. Everyone with an ear shot in my voice or eye shot in my face. So, I do hope to see a lot of families out there and thanks again for those efforts. Everybody at our schools. I'd like to also thank the schools. One of the items that we did recently at the Veterans Commission, we do have our Memorial Day Parade coming up and encourage everybody to, I'm sure Mr. Moss will make an announcement in that regard, to come out to our Memorial Day Parade. But we had a presentation of a plaque for the principal at Milpon School during the last school board meeting. And I know that that was a meeting where other items were on people's mind, but at the time that they announced the veterans, our commander, our chairman, our co-chairman, Mr. Moss, and they, and those gentlemen came up, there was a standing ovation. So, I wanted to thank the school officials for that and putting them in front of the, at the top of the agenda. Thought it was very appropriate. Also want to thank Lacy Little League. We threw out the first pitch. I'm hoping to see them again at Lacy Day and hoping that they will have another championship season. With one final note, people who may have seen the Lacy Reporter, just as a PSA and not to alarm, talking about Zika virus, people know that I'm an employee of the Ocean County Health Department. If anybody has any questions, seven three two, three four one, ninety-seven hundred, extension seven two two four. Just want people to walk their properties, look for any standing water. Now that it's warmer months, the standing water is used to grow larvae for mosquitoes. Take a look around your property, take necessary precautions, get rid of it. And please don't worry if you have a swimming pool. Like I said on the reporter earlier, that water is circulated, it's filtered, it's not standing, and it is chlorinated. So, a couple of brief PSAs and I wish everyone a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete, Committee Member McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, as summertime begins to roll in, it's time for our recreation department to kick it in the gear here. So, I was talking a little bit about what's going on in the summer. You're not active in the summer, it's your own fault here because there's so much going on. It's unbelievable that we're able to pull all this off. First, let me talk about the beach badges. They're already on sale. It's five dollars per badge and I believe the veterans are free for that. So, when you enjoy our lakes, you gotta have a beach badge. We got group Zoom lessons starting as of June twenty-eighth. The, and the Lacy Township Beach Bash, which is Saturday, June eighteenth, is the fiftieth anniversary of our, our Summer Lacy Beach Patrol. So, we're gonna have a big bash with that. That's festivities start at twelve noon on that. Obviously, we'll have the fireworks on July third and they're generously sponsored by Exelon. And of course, we have our, our day camp in the parks. And new this year is before care option for the summer camp. We did change the pricing a little bit on that. It's a hundred dollars per trial for the entire summer up to the day of June twenty-third and then after that it'll be a hundred and fifty. So, get registered early. Youth tennis camp. We got Lacy Tennis Club, which is gonna start their own little tournament going on. We got art camp. We got Jedi Engineering using Legos. This is for the elementary kids. I've been reading, I think if I was a little kid, I'd be pretty interested in that. We got our three-on-three outdoor basketball. Oh, we got more yoga classes going on. So, if you're into yoga, there's no reason you can't do it here. We have Sunset Yoga for the Lacy Food Bank. And that's at the Lake Barnigan Beach, the second lake, and it starts on June third, Friday. It's from six to seven and it's free as long as you bring a non-perishable food which goes to the food bank. And then we have Sunrise Yoga on the lake. We got Full Moon Yoga at Meadowlock Beach. Something that my wife likes to do, which is the wine and paint parties that we're gonna have. Whatever you wanna do, we got it. Lacy Day will be Saturday, August thirteenth, from twelve to four. And Mark Merz, which is a professional entertainer, he'll be walking around. And everything you wanna know about our recreation department, you can register online for any of these things is at lacytownship.youractiveworld.com. And you can register, you can pay for everything. And I would say that if you wanna be active this summer and stay in Lacy, we got it for you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. Committee Member Juliano?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things I'd like to bring. I know, I just noticed something. June eleventh, we're a pretty busy schedule in town here, huh?
Yes.
I got something else to add to it. As we know, the Hooked on Fishing Derby going on down at the lake. We also have Popcorn Park Zoo Rock to Adopt. I'm a supporter of the Popcorn Park Zoo. I support everything they do out there. I think they do a great job with giving up, but it's all day, so it's not gonna interfere with yours. It's into the, it's from June eleventh and Saturday, so it's till seven PM at night. So, the people can still come out. You can do that and then they can run out to there if they'd like. A few things with the Lacy Township Municipal Alliance. The senior dance, the next is Friday, May twenty-seventh. It's patriotic theme. Wear red, white, and blue, of course. That's everybody that comes out. I know the committee always goes, we all go. We gotta wear red, white, and blue. Right Veronica?
Correct. When is that?
May twenty-seventh to Friday. Let's see what else is going on. Meet the Officer Day, Saturday, May twenty-first, at ten AM to two PM at the middle school. Arnie Town Cemetery Bus Trip, Saturday, May twenty-eighth. They depart at eight-thirty AM, I believe, from town hall here. The Hooked on Fishing Derby, which we talked about. That's about all I really have, other than, like I said the last time, the parks are all open. Everybody, please be aware of everything. Keep your eyes on that road because the kids are all out there in all the parks. And we try to keep them as safe as we can with barricades as much as we can do, but sometimes things happen. We just gotta keep our eyes and ears open out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nick, Committee Member Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, as everyone knows from seeing all the pink ribbons up and down the road and in front of the building here, this is Cancer Awareness Month. Get out there, wear your pink, you know, show your, you know, awareness for all the folks in this, in this world that have suffered. Some have come through with, some have not, but it's a month that Meridian tries to really put the spotlight on every year. We've done it with them the last couple of years and it's worked out very well. I also want to lead into the fact that the Relay for Life is coming up at the end of this month, the twenty-first of, twenty-first of May. We put together Relay for Life in coordination ourselves and Berkeley Township. We do it together up in Veterans Park. It starts on Friday evening and it runs till Sunday morning, early Sunday morning. We're hoping for good weather. You know, guys, it has to be one of the two days with good weather, you're gonna be fishing in the rain, so we wish you the best. But, you know, it really truly is a nice, a nice event. It's something that at some point in your life, everyone's gonna know somebody that suffers with cancer and it's something to really get out there and support those that are survivors and those that did not survive. So, twenty-first, if you're interested in getting on a team, you know, just give us a call in town hall, we'll set you up with a team. If you're not interested in getting a team, just go out there. If you go out there Friday night, they have it at, I think it's ten o'clock, they have the Luminary Walk, which is very, very, you know, beautiful to attend because it's, all the individuals that have had cancer or have lost their lives to cancer have their pictures or some memorabilia on a little paper bag and roll it up with candles around the entire park. And it really is something very touching to see. So, it's the twenty-first of this month and it runs till the twenty-third. Couple of other things are, well, first of all, I want to, you know, just mention our police department and thank them for their, their efforts and their hard work in capturing the fugitive that was running around town over the last couple, well, last week. You know, he had broken out of jail and, and he ended up in Barnigan. Ultimately, you know, he ended up in Lacy Township. The chief kinda had a feeling he was here once they got the tip that he was on the parkway. Our police department engaged with the state police and Department of Corrections and they, between the efforts of all three, they were able to catch the gentleman up on the parkway and, and take him back and put him back in jail. But I want to extend special thanks to Chief Pepperata and officers that were involved and especially Detective Pierce, who was the, one of the two officers that was actually out there that, you know, caught the individual up on the Golden State Parkway. So, it was a great job done and certainly gives a lot of people a lot more comfort to know that he's, he's back in jail and off the road itself. Our police department is participating right now in the Police Unity Tour, which is a bike ride where they, they ride every year from New Jersey down to Washington DC and they honor different police officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty. And I just have a little paragraph here I just want to read that the chief put together for me. Officers of the Lacy Township Police Department are participating in the Police Unity Tour by joining over nineteen hundred officers, riding their bikes and making their way to the National Police Memorial in Washington DC. Participating officer Robert Flynn, Charlie May, John McKee, Adam Uwitt, Brian Flynn, Brian Holt, Alan Abrecht, Jeffrey Slaughter, Robert Surtees, and retired Officer Joe Soto. The former officers being memorialized at this year's SARMODI include Detective John Scotty Stevens, who was a resident of Lacy and worked at the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office before the tragic motor vehicle accident in Lacy Township back in January of two thousand fifteen. The officers will be at the memorial in support of former Lacy dispatcher Dawn Stevens and her son Scotty, as the memory of Scotty is honored. We usually don't have as many officers going down, but being that Scotty was being honored this year down there, there was a lot of, a lot of our officers that really wanted to go and I think more wanted to go, but we just couldn't let them all go down there. So, it's, it's a really special event and, you know, Scotty Stevens, if you knew him, was an outstanding individual that, you know, his life was lost way too young in a tragic motor vehicle accident out in Bamber, so. But I applaud those guys for taking and doing what they were doing with that. I have here some, some statistics, which I'm gonna, you know, just read to you. Mr. Ramaghi, I see you in the audience here and I, since you were here a month ago, I, you know, we've had a lot of different conversations and stuff. I know you've, you've met with the chief, you've gone to the task force meeting, you've gone to the schools, but I asked the chief to put together some statistics for us so that...
I heard you were at the task force meeting.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'd just like to read this so other people can see that, you know, that there are, you know, a big improvement going on in the town over the last couple of years. And then certainly we'll answer any questions you have once we, you know, get to the public session, but this was put together by Chief Pepperata. Chief Pepperata came on board with us four years ago and took over the police department. And unfortunately, he's, he's also gonna be retiring from the police department at the end of July of this year, so we, you know, we can lose somebody that's really done a tremendous job for us. Over the past three and a half years, with the tremendous support and engagement of the community that the police department has experienced, Lacy Township has seen the crime rate drop significantly. The township has experienced a sixty-four percent in residential and commercial burglaries from a high of one hundred and nineteen in two thousand twelve down to a low of forty-three in two thousand fifteen. Likewise, the township has experienced a fifty-one percent drop in thefts from a high of six hundred and eighty-four reported thefts in two thousand ten down to a low of three hundred and thirty-four in two thousand fifteen. These numbers come together with other offenses specified by the FBI to form our crime index. The other offenses, murder, rape, robbery, et cetera, occur with such low frequency that they do not significantly impact our crime index from year to year. Simply stated, burglaries and thefts are the most prominent offenses that directly impact residents in a municipality like Lacy Township. The crime index for Lacy Township peaked, peaked at its worst in two thousand ten at thirty-one point one, indicating that there were thirty-one point one Part One offenses, which are serious offenses, reported per thousand residents. Once published by the FBI, the two thousand fifteen crime index for Lacy Township will be low, will be below six, sixteen, down from thirty-one point one, which is indicative of the significant drop in burglaries and thefts experienced during two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and two thousand fifteen. This positive trend is currently continuing in two thousand sixteen. The drop in crime is attributable to numerous factors with no single factor being responsible. The officers of Lacy Township Police Department have engaged in an all-in approach throughout both the ununiform patrol division and the detective bureau. I'm sorry, the uniformed patrol division and detective bureau. The primary focus has been on drug interdiction and individual accountability. During the period, victimization in Lacy Township has dropped by as much as sixty-four percent. The proactive arrests made by officers have increased by as much as two hundred percent. The crime stats collected and reported by the FBI and the New Jersey State Police as Part One offenses are based on reported crime and do not reflect the efforts of the respective police department. Another important statistic to consider is the number of arrests in one year. The staff of the police department since two thousand thirteen has increased their proactive efforts in over nine hundred arrests in two thousand fifteen alone. This is up from the norms of the years prior to two thousand thirteen, when arrests tended to be below three hundred per year. The increase in arrests is directly attributable to a philosophy of accountability based on the premise that if someone enters Lacy Township and commits a crime, they will be arrested and they will be charged. Warrant checks and immediate on-scene or follow-up investigations by police officers have been a critical component. The officers have found this to be a very effective approach in decreasing the likelihood that the individual will attempt similar acts in Lacy Township in the future. Many of the proactive measures that are taken have come as a result of an engaged community providing detailed information for our officers to act upon. That community engagement will continue to be necessary moving forward for progress in the future for this to be possible. It is important to note that as the nation struggles and is finally openly recognized in the heroin epidemic, Lacy Township was well ahead of others in addressing the problem. Lacy Township has one of the youngest demographic makeups of the municipalities in Ocean County. Being a young town and squarely fitting into the demographic of concern for heroin abuse, Lacy Township has faced the same challenges as the rest of the nation. Heroin is a problem that will continue for years to come as the nation is being flooded with the drugs from across our borders. Furthermore, fentanyl, a much stronger synthetic form of the drug, is becoming more prevalent and will likely exasperate the issue on a national level in the months and years to come. Most notable for Lacy Township is that the township has experienced a more than twenty percent decrease in overdoses since two thousand twelve and thirty percent reduction in deaths related to overdoses since two thousand twelve. This reduction has occurred during a time that the remainder of the county, as well as the state and the nation, has experienced significant increases since two thousand twelve. While any overdoses or deaths related to overdoses are certainly too many, it is important to recognize that some strides are being made overall to deal with the problem locally. The members of Lacy Township Police Department recognize that drug interdiction is at the core of the issue and will continually, will continue to proactively enforce the laws related to drug distribution and possession. Lacy Township Police Department will continue to engage the community and provide awareness through our social media posts, the Alive at Twenty-Five program at the high school, project graduation participation, project craft participation, formation of the Lacy Municipal Police Foundation, production and distribution of educational materials, formal representations, including two media presentations for parents, involvement in community groups and programs with the youth, such as the most recent speedball tournament at the middle school, the cop card assembly and program, meet the officer event, and the upcoming prize ceremony, which we were just talking about a little bit earlier. The Meet the Officer Day event is scheduled this year for Saturday, May twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, from ten AM to two PM at the Lacy Township Middle School. Everyone is invited to stop by and meet the members of the police department. These are just, I had asked the chief if he would put some stuff together because certainly you appearing here does raise a lot of questions and awareness for other folks in the community and, you know, we just wanted, I know you've gotten a lot of the answers or you've gotten some answers from some of the people you've been talking to over the last month, but I just felt, you know, it was important that we put this out there and, you know, certainly when we go into public session, I know you'll have a few questions and we'll be happy to talk about some.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Just a couple items from me. I just want to welcome our new tax collector to town. I think it's, one of the things that's not talked about enough is the upper level of management in the township. We undertake a very extensive hiring process when we're interviewing the potential candidates for the management positions in town. On this position, I think we went through no fewer than seven or eight interviews and that was the same case when we were looking at our deputy treasurer. It was an extensive interview, interview process and I don't think that people understand how serious we take those hires. The other item of business I wanted to talk about is we're slowly chipping away at the light at the intersection of Haynes Street and Lake Barnigan Drive. Right now, the, the estimates are coming in a little bit pricey. And finally, I also had, and piggyback on some of the things that Gary was, was just talking about, the drug problem. I had a chance over the past couple of days to talk to the superintendent in, in Lacy and one of the things that I always, I always bristle at is hearing Lacy Reporter is heroin high. So, I had the opportunity to talk to her at length about, you know, how they handle some of the drug testing. And I just, I have the exact numbers. Again, I'm not on the school board, but I feel like I should, these, these things have to be conveyed. They test approximately, they have about forty tests a month and generally only about one or two come back dirty. And in the time that the super has been there, she indicated that none of those tests had come back for anything other than marijuana. So, I think that's really important that people understand that. I'm not saying that it's not a problem, but it's, you know, it also has to be put in a little bit of perspective. She's also given me the contact with the company that handles the drug testing at the, at all the schools. It's a company based out in Ohio and I had a chance to talk to that gentleman this morning. And he had a very interesting perspective on the problem. It's obviously a nationwide problem and I thought, without going into too great detail, I, I'm comfortable with all the work that the schools are doing in response to the drug problem, considering the magnitude and severity of the problem nationwide. In addition to the budget constraints on a local municipal budget, I think the schools are actually doing a fairly progressive job. So, those are all my comments. And with that, I will open it up to the public. Comments, questions for the public?
Hello, it's Ronnie Duhon. My name is John Romalia. I live at three oh nine Bayside, East Parkway, Florida River. I feel like my emails got treated like Rodney Dangerfield, you know, they went to spam. So, you never got a chance to read them till yesterday.
We just got it yesterday.
Yeah, I understand. So, I understand why there was no response back from my personal reaching out to all of you. So, I took your advice, took your advice. I went to a school board meeting. I listened to Dr. Anthony. I had a private conversation with her that lasted close to two hours, which we talked in-depth about her efforts and what she's doing within the school system and why she took the job. And she took the job to fight heroin for her own personal reasons. It's one of the things that drew her to our community. And then she invited me to join the task force, which I was part of at their last meeting. So, I've taken all your recommendations and traveled the ground that you would have me walk. And I guess I, I don't have to go over what I sent to you because you've already read it. And so, I don't think you've actually addressed my questions in writing about, you know, what's, what's going on and what kind of thinking are you, are you doing in the future? Because this needs forward thinking. This doesn't need status quo thinking. Status quo thinking got us where we are today. This is not a problem you created and I love all the good things you're doing in the township. I applaud you for all the good things that you do, but there's still a chasm here that the kids are falling into. And the category is that eighth grader, you know, it's, it's, I think I've said this once before, it's, it's that kid that's going from a little pond, you know, hooked up fishing, right, into a bigger pond into the big sea, right? They're struggling for identity, they don't know who they are. And I can tell you, you know, you know I lost my son. Another one of his personal friends that, you know, I used to go fishing with, I used to cart their bodies all over tri-state area for tournaments that they would be involved in. And then recently, just recently, a third. And that third young man that died, that, you know, I played catch with, I took fishing, I did all the things you're talking about, right? They're all dead. On my street, five people have been affected by opiates on three oh nine Bayside, East Parkway. That is a very short street. I gotta tell you, there's only twelve houses on it and five households were affected. And they didn't affect each other. Do you know what I mean? Like, you know, this is, if you lived on my street, I didn't get you hooked on it, you know? They all did it separately on their own. So, what I hear you saying is that you're taking measures, right? And, and you're doing things and you think you're making progress, right? And, you know, I, I did metrics for the United States Navy. I collect a lot of data, right? I supported the fleet, everything that flies off an aircraft carrier deck. I'm an IT technician. I look at data points. If you study the wrong data, it doesn't mean a thing. It doesn't mean a thing if you're studying the wrong data. I listened to the chief go over all his data points and they sounded like one of my meetings when I was talking to admirals, when we all take our information and we put it on a spreadsheet and we slant it the way we want it to look. And, and that's what everybody does. I mean, that's, that's natural. We want to look good. We all want to look good. But the reason, once again, let me just reiterate, you know, why I'm here. I'm here to protect that eighth grader, right? That's about to fall prey to society, right? To this, this dark side of society, which is heroin. And I'm asking you, once again, I'm asking you to be champions, to think forward. You know, don't be satisfied with what you're doing now. Think out of the box because I'm telling you right now, what you're doing is not enough. It's not enough. You're trying and you've got a huge problem in front of you and you don't know what to do. But doing this, you know, Einstein reportedly said, you know, doing the exact same thing, the exact same way, over and over again, and expecting a different outcome is the definition of insanity. So, I have a couple of questions. So, I'm gonna leave that long narrative I wrote to you for you to respond to at a later date, but I do have some other things that I would like to say, so I could be a little abstract, so I'll just get some. Okay. It seems to me that you will either be counted on the right or the wrong side of history regarding this problem with heroin in Lacy Township in the United States of America. My intention is to fight this battle in my town where my son, Matthew Romalia, was first introduced to heroin, even though he committed suicide by train in Red Bank, New Jersey. And that's a very important data point. He was not counted in your statistics. All three of these young men that I talked about are not counted in your statistics. The crime rate that they go, when a family becomes fractured and parents don't know what to do, and you go through rehab and rehab, and believe me, I've thrown close to a hundred K at this problem, you know, relying on the advice of others and tried, you know, didn't work. You know, my wife is a speech pathologist, we're both educated people, we read, we understand problems. Everything that, all the advice we took didn't work out for my son. Okay. So I'm saying you're looking at the wrong data, right? You're making assumptions based on incorrect data points, all right? So I'm asking you to think beyond those, because there's kids that are committing crimes that were, you know, hooked, I don't want to say hooked on drugs, but, you know, that were hooked on drugs in Lacy and went to some other town and did B and Es, or got arrested, or died, right? So.
Let me just say one thing, because I know the chief mentioned it here. That also goes the other way, because as he told you, the last four deaths that we had in town here, they're not Lacy residents, they're in town. One was living in a tent in the woods, but unfortunately, that's on our, you know, statistics. One was in town living with parents that had recently moved to town. So the numbers go both ways. So I totally agree with you when it comes to statistics.
Yeah.
But the reality is, you know, that it's not.
It's bidirectional. I understand.
That's the problem.
Right. But recently, I mean, just last week, I mean, Richard's barber shop down on Route Nine, I was getting my hair cut, you know, I wanted to look good for you guys. So I'm there, and I'm talking to this woman whose daughter is in jail, she cuts hair there. And there was a guy in a chair, he lives on a street, right here in Lacy. He was another overdose in Lacy just last week. Kid came home from rehab on Sunday, he made it to Tuesday morning, and he overdosed. Narcan II brought him back, right? So he's alive, he didn't die, but it's ongoing. You understand, he didn't have a chance to get out of his house. His parents had him under the thumb, but somehow or other, either the drugs were still in his house, you know, from previous times he purchased them, or somebody came and gave him drugs when his parents went to work or did whatever. So I'm just saying, you gotta know what to study, right? And I know you want to make us all feel better, but I'm saying you can't convince me just yet, right? That you're doing everything you possibly can, right? So, and that's, let me just go on with my next point, but thank you for bringing it. It is bidirectional, and it certainly is, right? And I understand that, because, you know, we live in a township with a lot of disposable income. There's a lot of parents that make good money here, they give their kids money, and something else happens next. All right, so, my son is not counted. Citizens of Lacy are gonna decide for themselves if those in the position of power did little more than sit on their hands and accept the status quo. And that's directed at you, that's pointed right straight at you, it's pointed at the police department, it's pointed at the school board, it's pointed at every mother and father in town, and every kid in town. We're all in this together. This is not any one person's problem, it's all our problems. And Deputy Mayor, you know, I was a little taken back by something you said. You know, you told me that the police department had no influence over the school board, and that's not what I'm hearing.
No, no.
It's on record, I recorded it. You said that you had no influence over the school board, but your police department works with the school board, and they're on the task force, and they're all forging forward policies and procedures that they think are gonna help. So if you're funding the police department, then you have a dog in his fight.
Well, I'm glad you addressed me, because when you were finished, I wanted to address you in a collegial way. So you, and I'll start at the beginning. You talked about the definition of madness, doing the same thing expecting a different result. I submit to you, I'm part of the regional coalition in this county, away from what I do on the political spectrum, it's part of what I do for the county board health. When we talk about evidence-based programs that we deliver, whether it's the Ocean County Health Department, Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, Barnabas Institute of Health, licensed individuals in alcohol and drug, or certified prevention specialists, or people that specialize in mental health treatment, we are all standing here shoulder to shoulder. Definition of the evidence-based programs that are nothing but new, that are coming out in our schools now, in particular in the schools in this school system, that we're in here, and indeed throughout the county, most high schools, most grade schools, and some elementary schools, there's a continuum of care that starts as early as the second grade, that goes on all the way through to the 12th. And what we're trying to do after that is get into the colleges. I personally have given programs at a college, Georgia Court University. Tomorrow, I'm gonna be in front of 400 kids tomorrow morning at seven o'clock at a high school in Ocean County. I've presented Project Drive, Driving Responsible Youth to this high school. We talk about the eighth grader, the state has recognized that. This regional coalition of providers in Ocean County has recognized that. We talk about, the one thing where legislation fails is, I think, we fall short, we can't get into somebody's kitchen, okay? At some point, our oversight, police oversight, educators oversight ends, and personal responsibility has to start. I know that with the disease of addiction, and I understand that it's a disease, okay? And in the old days, it may have been looked and disparaged upon as something else, I know that it's a disease. So we're trying to attack it medically, and when a kid puts a heroin needle in his arm, that bothers me. That's why I chose the career I did, that's why I do what I do, right? It bothers me, it bugs me. I don't like these statistics. So what I'm telling you is, when we have these programs, and when we have this coalition, and when we're out doing what we do in our schools, in programatics everywhere that you can imagine, these are things that are new that never happened before. There's a pre-test, there's the program. Program may be up to eight sessions long during school time, so that there's a captive audience. Then there's a post-test to measure what was learned. So it's nothing qualitative, and it's all quantitative. Some of it is paid for through grants, and the people, the people at the state that issue those grants want to see and require results, and that's the way it is with any municipal alliance. So I feel for your loss. I'm not gonna insult you by saying, hey, I know what you're going through and all that. I have no clue.
You know, I don't have any clue how somebody else feels that lost a son to the same thing.
Life without my daughter, I could not imagine. She's 11, and I love her dearly, I couldn't put one foot in front of the other tomorrow.
You can't even say you're sorry, because it don't mean anything.
That's part of why I do what I do. But where I get a little bit frustrated is, I know Committeeman Quinn, and I know the rest of this board up here, and the people that run this town. I'm fortunate to know that some of the people at our schools, including Mr. Faulkner. So I know that the people are vested in this. At some point, at the end of the road, we reach as far as hard, we push as far and as hard as we can. We'd like to rip that needle out of somebody's hand, I'd like to have it in my hand, crush it, squeeze the life out of it, throw it in a waste container. But I can't be there in that dining room, and you name the town USA. But what I don't want to see is you come up here and say that we're doing the same old thing, we're somewhat disinterested. I'm sorry it didn't work for you, but I could tell you, I graduated high school in 1986, I'm 47 years old. There was absolutely nothing like what there is now in our schools. This is a completely new era with a care continuum that starts at A and goes to Z. The issue is, when a child, a young man, a woman leaves high school, and the people, statistically, they're dying from heroin, are Caucasian, generally speaking, male, generally speaking, 18 to 25, 18 to 26, 27, and up, generally speaking. That's a hard group to reach. Now, I saw you, and I discussed some of this with you at that school board event before the item with the veterans started. I apologize I didn't receive your email.
That's not your fault.
It did go to spam.
Yeah.
I had every, I knew I'd see you back, that's why I walked over to you at the school board meeting.
And I thank you for it.
And I respect you. And so you could tell, right now, I'm speaking from the heart. I mean, there's no script. So I just want you to know that we are doing everything that we possibly do. There's no, we're not putting a screen door on a submarine and making it pretty, we're not trying to push water with a fork and telling you how good we're doing with a bulldozer. We're going in there, and we're fighting this fight. And we're standing, should people with licenses, letters after their name, educating folks like yourself.
You know, letters after their name doesn't always, you're gonna go talk to 400 kids, and I don't mean to be insulting, but if I went to go talk to 400 high school kids, I'm a talking head. You'd be better off with some kid that, you know, is incarcerated with tattoos all up and down his arms, that tells you what it's, what kind of food he's eaten that day, what this life led to. I know your heart is there, your heart is in the wrong place, but you're not gonna reach that audience because they are drifting on you. And when we talk, you know, when you talk, my son outsmarted me, you know, at every step. You don't understand, they know the answers to these pre and post-test things you're talking about, before you even ask the question. My son knew everything on how to defeat all my efforts, and by the way, drug testing.
That's part of the disease of addiction.
I called the company that, you know, makes the drug test, I told him I had a heroin addict for a son. They sold me the kits that were, the seven-panel kits for $3 apiece, they're very, very, you find the right one, they will sell them to you cheap, by the way, just as a side note. So I was defeated. I am, I stand here a defeated man. But right now, we have more deaths due to opiates than we do kids that get killed in drunk driving. Right now, that wrecked car you put out in front of the high school, it should be a dead body laying there, you know, with a needle in his arm. Because more kids are dying today from opiates than they are from car crashes, from drunk driving and car crashes. You know, that's a statistic, that's true.
I disagree with you.
It just was spoken to me by Dr. Anthony. It was in all those red night things that were put out on the web.
And a lot of fatal crashes, and about a third to half of fatal crashes, you will find drugs or alcohol. You will, especially with underage folks. That's a fact.
Okay. But once again, I would, if I could, I understand you want to push back, you know, I want to push forward.
No, I want to listen, and I want to.
Okay, so I have some ideas. I'm going to meet with the prosecuting attorney very shortly, and I have some concrete ideas about what to do that's different. Number one, the staggering statistic that 90% of all new heroin addicts start in the bathroom medicine cabinet, all right? What, you want to grab the needle out of their hand? How about if they never take a drug? And how about if they never have the urge to take it again? You know, stop it before it starts. That's the answer. That's why I'm so focused on this age group. And, you know, I have this idea that, you know, kids that are in this vulnerable corridor, you know, if we had a public service that was sponsored by CVS, who sells everybody drugs, all the big box stores, Home Depot, Walmart, Lowe's, they would sponsor something that would be a beachhead, right, between, let's say, Manahawken, John Spatafor is a good friend of mine, I know he'll come on board with this, to Tom's River, and we lock up all the drugs in every house that wants it, right, installed by, let's say, reputable ex-police officers, so you don't have to worry about somebody coming into your house, and let's lock the drugs up. You know, I personally suffer from something called phantom pains, because I had a motorcycle accident when I was a young person. So I have to keep hard drugs in my own medicine cabinet. And I have to tell you, Mayor, my son probably had his first taste of drugs from my own medicine cabinet, you know, that I can't, when I get these phantom pains, I can't, I can't call the doctor up, he's gonna ask me to come in, you know, I have to have them on hand, right? So people do this, right? And I'm saying, stop it before it starts. And the other time that we were here, there was a gentleman who, he talked about that he would like to raise money for a dog, right? And, you know, if you've taken, you, I would like to see that plan, but slightly modified. I would like to see an organization that was either run by, locally in the town here by concerned citizens such that are on the task force, where a parent could call up, and they could have a dog run through the house, right? And if there's any narcotics in that house whatsoever, that dog is gonna find. I actually spoke to a man who has a great dog, he trains them for the police, for the state police, for local police, he trains dogs. This dog costs between $8,500 and $12,000, and he guarantees the dog, it will be 100% effective. And, you know, we could, in the past, I've gone to places like the Power Company and asked for grants to sponsor the homeless house for men at St. Stevens Church, that's my church. They're more than willing to cough up money to make them look good in the community. And I'm saying that, I know you have budgetary problems, the rateables are dropping in Lacy, and they're dropping everywhere, but, you know, maybe we can go out and get people from colleges that are prospective lawyers that know how to write grants to help us with this problem. You know, when I was in the IT world, I got kids from high school to come in and help me write software, and they were better than I was at it, you know, young minds. I'm saying, you've got to, like, take hold of this thing and don't think of it the same way you've been thinking about it. I'm telling you, those people with letters after their name, they don't know as much as a lot of other people that have, like, lived through it, whether they're addicts, whether they're parents, you know, whether they're employers. And so I'm just imploring, I'm begging you, really, just don't think of it the same old way. Think of it open-mindedly, and please, I mean, that's just, you know, watch what you measure, watch how you measure it, make your conclusions based on empirical evidence that is solid, and not just that slanted data that I pushed, that my department pushed, you know, that your department pushes, we all push that stuff. I've been in the meetings, guys, you know, I know.
I would just offer that, if there was, I don't think any one of us up here take it lightly, I don't think any of us up here think we're fixing the problem. Having said that, if you think there's something that we should be doing that you would like us to take a look at, we'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
I would, that's exactly what I'm asking for.
That's fine. In addition to that, my own personal feelings on it, this drug issue is a very complicated issue throughout the nation. And if heroin or whatever the drug, pick whatever drug was eradicated off the earth, there'd be something else right behind it.
It's about escaping euphoria and root problems. Why do kids do this to begin with, which is a deeper issue? But right now, you know, if we could just kick the kid from being bit by the snake, that's good enough for me right now, because maybe they'll reach an age of reason where they can make up their own minds. But this is a death sentence for me, that I've seen other friends go down this tube, and they're not here anymore, and they're gone, and they used to play ball with me, and they used to go fishing with me, and they're not here anymore.
Again, if you want any suggestions, we'd be more than happy to listen to you.
Well, I do have some suggestions, and, you know, and there are two really concrete ones, that, you know, the...
If you email, it would be better if you'd email in a little bit specific, exactly what you're looking at.
Sure, yeah.
And we'll look, and we'll discuss it.
But we need to have sponsorship. In other words, I'm actually willing to go out there and raise money, right? But I'm not gonna do it on my own, because, you know, with regard to the dog handle, let's say you want parents to be accountable, right? You want this to happen at the dining table, you know, at home, right? This conversation needs to take place over and over and over again, right? But let me tell you, one of the hugest confusions I've faced in my whole life is, like, knowing or not knowing for sure whether my son was using again or not, okay? Once you find out, right, it's this, it's a tight rope you walk, you know, like, when you accuse them of being high when they're not, you know?
It's an awful experience for a father.
It's terrible. So, you know, what you really want to know is, you want to know for sure what's going on. And when you know for sure what's going on, then you can, without any confusion, you can define your course of action from there. And so that's what the dog, within the township, it would be a dog that was strictly for Lacy, right? But this concept of the drug locked-up cabinets, you know, the drug cabinets locked up from Manahawken to Tom's River, if we could get something sponsored across all those townships, now you have a swath of territory up and down Route Nine, right? So if you put it in place, you know, for eighth graders, let's say, right, for kids that are falling into that category, and now, you know, ninth, 10th, 11th grade, now you measure your statistics, you see if locking up the drugs has actually worked. Are there less cases now of drug addiction, new drug addiction, that's happening since we've locked up the drugs? It's a real simple...
Are you saying, Mr. Ramalia, to interrupt you, in each home have a lock-in cabinet?
Anyone who wants it. Anyone who wants it. And they call somebody up, right, and the cost of installing it, and the cost of the cabinet, and this is very particular for you ladies, because you don't want to mess your bathrooms up with, you know, cabinets that aren't attractive, they don't have to be in the bathroom, they can be in the laundry room, they can be any place you want, you know, but just, just secure, just like you want a gun, right? This is like a gun, isn't it, like a gun? You know, they say guns don't kill, people do, you know?
You know, another new and innovative thing we've had, for actually years now, is we were, I believe, one of the first municipal... we were, I believe, one of the first municipalities to have the.
Yes.
Prescription drop-off box.
Correct.
And I, I wanted to bring.
And you know how many thousands of pounds we've got over the years? Because it's in the thousands.
Yeah. And I have some bottles for you really, you know, since, uh, because I went through my wife's medicine cabinet and, and this, this is the other problem. This problem is, you know, the doctors are like, you know, my wife had a small surgical procedure done and she got 120 pills. 120 pills. What are the doc, the doctors are as much a part of this problem as anybody else is and the drug companies that okay prescriptions for 120. I mean, this goes way beyond Lacey Township from a political, grand political scheme. But Lacey can be the center of a beachhead between Manahawken and Toms River where we try these, some tech, try something, try something different and see if it changes. You know, it's going to take three years to get the data back, but you can't just sit around and do nothing. That's all I'm saying. And the same old, same old, believe me, I listen to all those people and I know probably much more about drug addiction than you'll ever know.
Well.
Really, seriously, because I've gone to seminars and the best place is to understand it medically, psychologically. Do you know that the brain atrophies, it actually shrinks? And all those centers that tell you what's right and wrong to do are gone because your brain has shrunk. And that if you go through six to nine months of rehab when you don't take any drugs, the atrophy of your brain comes back.
Takes a long time.
Now all of a sudden, yeah, but.
That's why recidivism is so high.
Well, and, and really nine months is too, is too late. It's more like a year and a half to two-year program. But listen, there's probably other people that want to speak. I've got my message across. I will submit to you in writing what my plan is. I'm meeting with the prosecutor's office very shortly. I'm going to propose this, this, he's got money, right? From, uh, cars.
Right.
Whatever that's been seized, right?
Yes.
And, and they're, uh, they're, they sound like they're open to new ideas. So if, if we could make Lacey the center of a beachhead that went from Manahawken to Toms River and see if we can move this needle in a new direction, I would feel, you know, it's, it's just like personally, you want to feel, you know, people say everything happens for a reason. I find that so hard to believe. Why am I somebody? What's that reason, you know? But if it could, if this could help motivate me to help motivate other people to save somebody's life, and you're all motivated, I know you are, yeah, I know you're, you're trying. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying we need to try new things. The old things aren't working. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anything else from the public?
Yeah. Let me just look at my watch.
Good evening. Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Uh, got here late because I got hung up at work.
You have approval.
Thank you. You knew the question I was going to ask already.
They put them out the week before the event.
Okay. Uh, just want to put my final plug in because this is the last meeting before we go. Uh, a week from Saturday, May 21st will be the Relay for Life of Berkeley slash Lacey. We have a record number of teams. We're at 47 teams right now. We've never had more than 35. Uh, the funds we've collected so far is higher than we've ever done before. We're hoping to hit our goal. Uh, the only thing in question, and I'm looking at advanced forecasts, is damn, it better not rain. But I want to invite everybody out. Uh, it's going to be a wonderful day. The sun's going to be out. There won't be a cloud in the sky. It's going to be beautiful and it's going to be lovely walking around the track. Then when we light those bags up at night, it's, uh, it's really something to see. So I just want to get the word out to everybody. And if there's anybody out there that still wants to come in as a team, I'll find more campsites for you because that's my job. So, May 21st, teams start setting up 10:30 in the morning. The event really, well, the survivor's lunch is at noon. Two o'clock is when things really start kicking off and then we go all night long till 6:00 AM. So everybody, I'd like to see everybody out there and having a good time and, you know, everybody's going to be selling their wares and having their games, et cetera. So hopefully we get a good turnout. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You're a great champion for that event.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Faulkner.
Tom Faulkner, Brentwood Road, Fort River. I thought I'd be home by now, but, um, hearing that gentleman speak, I have to make some comments. I happen to be one of the student assistant counselors at Lacey High School and my main duties are dealing with alcohol and drugs along with depression, anxiety, whatever happens in that high school that may not come under the guidance counselor. I do a lot of suicide prevention work. Kids making threats, that happens in our high school. Um, I applaud that man's comments. I'm sad, I'm sorry to see he left, but I'm, I welcome him to the task force. I wasn't at the last meeting and it sounds like he has a lot of great comments. He wants to make a difference like all of us do. He mentioned eighth graders. Let me tell you, sadly to say, it's starting younger than the eighth graders. I'm seeing 10 children right now in Mill Pond who, for the most part, come from fragmented families and they are at risk. They are at risk at using drugs, although they're not doing it right now as far as I can assess at this point. But mom or dad may not be in the home, mom or dad may be incarcerated or in rehab, they may be living with grandparents, which is a phenomenon going on right now in our, in our country and society. So these kids are at risk. By the time they get to eighth grade, they may be using something already, as that gentleman has indicated. We had, um, meetings several months ago about random drug testing in the middle school. I think it's still in hold, but that's something that's being considered. In the high school, when a child, a child, a student, a young adult is found to be positive for a substance, they are referred to student assistance counselor, for the most part to me. And for the most part, through the last four years since it started, it's been, the majority has been marijuana, all right? You call a parent and they say, you've probably heard this comment, oh, thank goodness, it's only marijuana, but it's the start. Sadly, it's the start. Last week, we had our first different substance, amphetamines. So where's this kid getting amphetamines? He's probably buying them on the street or like that gentleman said, from, from the cabinet, the, uh, the medical cabinet in his own home. So it's a big problem, big problem, and we are trying, we are trying all the time to do things. We have Mr. Curatola's, uh, department come in. They make great presentations. Uh, this, this year, this past September, we did a drug code, um, presentation for our freshmen. No sooner was it over, there was a, I believe it was the homecoming dance for Halloween weekend. 20 of the kids that we educated that two weeks, they were found to be at a party drinking alcohol. They were pulled over, some of whom were driving, some of the older kids, they were pulled, pulled over drinking alcohol. Were they listening? Were they listening and hearing us or were we just wasting our breath? It's very frustrating sometimes. So my last comment, towards the end of his comments, he mentioned the doctors. The key thing is there's so many factors involved. You have your doctors who are unscrupulous doing, not all of them, they're great people for the most part, they're writing overly excessive prescriptions like you mentioned for dental problems, things like that. Vicodin for, uh, you know, two, three weeks, you need a couple of days if at all, all right? We have pharmacies that are, you know, not only in Lacey, but are renewing things, they're getting prescriptions that are stolen. I work in the emergency room. I see people coming, traveling from emergency room to emergency room trying to get prescriptions. I see people, not only young adults in the emergency room, but people in their 25 to 30 range, seriously addicted to heroin. They have nowhere to go and, uh, they feign that they're suicidal so they can get into a hospital and get off the stuff for at least a week. They're out and they go out and they get a fix. So it's, it's a problem that's ongoing, not only in Lacey, but in all the towns, probably across the country. And because the heroin is so cheap now, $3 for a hit maybe, $3 to $5 per hit, and you know, I don't know what to say anymore. I just, you know, applaud your efforts here, although maybe that gentleman doesn't think you're doing much. Our chief has been so supportive in what he's done in the last few years. I personally have missed him and become a friend of his. He's done so much to help us in the schools as well as his officers, as well as the prescription drop box, drop box, that has made a big difference as far as I'm concerned. You hear about, I'm not going to give you statistics because I don't have, I wasn't prepared for this tonight, but if you think about the break-ins and the robberies and stuff, they're breaking in to get into the medicine cabinets to get what's in there to sell on the street. And I'm telling you that probably, um, probably 100% or 95% sure that's why that's happening. So, um, do I have a point here? My point is I had to get this out to let you know this is an ongoing problem. We're in the schools. I see it every day. How heartbreaking, my first year to see a student pass away, just like a week after I saw this young man. It was heartbreaking to have his brother come in in tears. How could we console him? And we had tried to do so much for this young man. So continue your efforts, please. Think outside the box. I'll try and do what I can. I got a pink slip last week, but apparently they changed their minds. I'll be back at least for another year.[1742.94]